It's 5:30, so we're gonna get started. I want to welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us. My name is Jenny Lacoste Caputo. I'm Executive Director of Communications and Community Relations. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on what on-campus instruction will look like at our middle and high schools. We know that you guys are anxiously awaiting this information, so we're happy to bring it to you, and thanks for joining us. We know many of you are joining us via livestream, so thanks for that as well. The webinar is being recorded. This will be available on our website later tonight, so that you'll be able to share it with your friends. We are expanding our platform so that our webinars can accommodate more people. Up to 1,000 will be our next jump. So if you weren't able to get into the webinar, hopefully you are watching on the livestream. And those of you that are on the webinar, when we get started after the presentation, if you'll use the Q&amp;A function for your questions, we'll get to as many as we possibly can, but know that we do capture these to the extent possible, and they really inform our online FAQ. So we appreciate that, and know that many of the questions can be similar, so sometimes I'll try to wrap those together. So if you hear it, but it wasn't worded in exactly the way you worded it, we probably have many people asking a similar question. Joining our panel tonight is our Board of Trustees President Amy Weir. Before I introduce the panelists and before Dr. Flores gives his welcome, I'd like to ask President Weir to say a few words.
Thank you, Jenny. I just want to say welcome, and thank you to everyone for joining us tonight. And on behalf of the board, I would like everyone to know that we are reading all of your emails and all of your feedback. But I hope you'll understand that even if you know one of us personally, we generally are not responding, because the board doesn't handle the day-to-day operations of the district. That's the people before you. And we really don't have the answers. Sometimes there aren't any answers. Luckily, we have Ms. Lacoste Caputo, who has been doing an amazing job answering all of the emails on behalf of the district and the board. So thank you, Jenny, for all of that. You know, the board is not the one doing the hard work. It's this staff that's doing all the hard work to make this happen. The superintendent and his team are making the tough decisions for our schools and our teachers and our kids. So I would just ask everyone watching to please be patient, and know that the staff of Round Rock ISD are doing their absolute best to ensure a safe return to school, first virtually, which I can't believe is in three weeks, and then hopefully in person in September for those families that feel comfortable sending their students back to campus. So thank you. Thank you for everybody watching, and all of the people that are on the panelists that are gonna speak to us. And with that, I'm gonna be a middle school parent and just sit back and watch the presentation.
Thank you, President Weir. We appreciate your leadership and the leadership of the entire board and the support that you give the staff. I'm gonna go ahead and introduce our panelists, just so you know who will be answering your questions tonight. With us tonight, we have Becky Donald, who's Area Superintendent for the District, Jonathan Smith, Principal of Deer Park Middle, Sherry Bonds, Director of Career and Technical Education, Dr. Daniel Presley, Senior Chief of Schools and Innovation, Zach Oldham, Principal of Cedar Valley Middle School, Anthony Watson, Principal of Stony Point High School, Thomasine Stewart, Principal of Success High School, Mandy Estes, Chief of Teaching and Learning, Randy Hafner, Director of Health Services, Lisa Robach, Director of Fine Arts, Mario Acosta, Principal of Westwood High School, and Dwayne Wireick, Athletic Director. And we also have Heather and Pam, who are doing a deaf interpretation for us, and we so appreciate their help tonight. And so with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Flores. Once he's finished, we will provide a presentation that we hope will answer a lot of your questions, and once that presentation's over, then we'll take questions from our Q&amp;A. Dr. Flores?
Thank you so much, Jenny, and also thank you, President Weir, for the opening remarks. I want to welcome everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Steve Flores, the proud Superintendent of Round Rock ISD, and we're glad you're joining us, whether you're on the webinar or watching the livestream, or even a recorded version of this event later. Our purpose with these town halls is to bring you our subject matter experts, who have been working day in and day out for months to plan a safe reopening of schools for our students and staff, to answer your questions and address concerns. As you all know by now, we will be beginning the school year as scheduled on August the 20th, but we will be 100% virtual for at least the first three weeks. We are hopeful we will be able to welcome students back to campus after that, but we'll also continue to offer a virtual option. Today's town hall will focus on what in-person instruction will look like in our middle and high schools. We know how important face-to-face interaction is for our students, and we need to balance that with the safety for all. So tonight, we'll be providing more information on what the experience will be for students and for our parents. We have a great panel of experts. Jenny just introduced them, including some of our wonderful middle and high school principals, who will give you an overview and answer your questions. I also know many of you and your students have questions about extracurricular activities. So our panel also includes Athletic Director Dwayne Wireick and Director of Fine Arts Lisa Robach. Also joining us for tonight, as you got to meet our Board President Amy Weir. They can help explain their role and priorities as we all work on these challenges together. You should have received an email earlier this month with a link to a parent choice form, asking if you prefer on-campus or at-home learning for your student, once we open schools. I understand that some of you are waiting to hear the information tonight before making a decision. Please know that you can access that link anytime and make or even change your choice. We will be flexible. We asked for that information by August 6th for our planning purposes. Again, as I stated, we will be flexible, and no choice you make now is binding. We want you to do what's best for you and your child. We have another town hall scheduled for Monday, August 3rd, focusing on special education services. Information on how to watch that will be on our website and social media channels. Thank you again for your patience and support as we navigate through unprecedented times. Please know that in everything we do, the health, safety, and well-being of our students and staff is our top priority. And we want answers. You want answers. As superintendents, I speak daily to superintendents across the state that want answers as well. But we know that we don't have a national plan to reopen schools, and we don't have a state plan. It is up to the local districts to determine that. So we are working very diligently to get this right. So with that, I'll now turn this over to Dr. Danny Presley, our Senior Chief of Schools and Innovation. Dr. Presley?
I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. Everyone's been hard at work in the district, from the campus level, throughout the district, to determine the best way to set up good outcomes for our kids. Excuse me. And I'll turn it over to Becky Donald right now to start the presentation.
Good evening, everyone, and it is my privilege to start to look at, you know, how we're gonna reopen school for middle and high school. If you could go to the next slide. What we always want to do is what our guiding principles are, and those principles guide every decision that we make. And one is, the first is our priority of our students and staff and their safety. Then we focus on equity and making sure that each decision, we look at with that lens of equity and making sure that it is for all of our students, and it is in the best interest. And then we need to stay flexible. We know that daily we get new information coming from the CDCs or the state government, and also even the local government. And so as a district, we're working our best to stay flexible. I love working with all of the principals in this district, and the people on this panel know and understand the word flexible. Next slide, please. So when I look at reopening schools, and Dr. Flores and Ms. Weir mentioned, Phase 1 is at the lowest risk. That's where students are at home. From August 20th through September 10th, our students will be instructed in the house. When we look at that, they'll have A classes, they'll meet their teachers, they'll be introduced to content, new content that has been created by teachers. And as teachers are creating content for Phase 1, they're also working very hard for Phase 2, which is when we become back on campus. So then it becomes a little bit more risk. So when we get to September 10th, we've done three weeks of virtual, and now parents have a choice to either continue virtual or to come in-person to school. And so when we look at coming into school, we know that to keep people safe and to meet all the CDC guidelines, we're gonna have students in small groups or learning labs. They're gonna be located in with the same teacher, the same teacher advisor. They're gonna have all the equipment they need to be successful in the building as well as at home. And so when we look at that interaction in Phase 2, we know that it's gonna be a little restricted. I don't know about you on this call, but I know that I can only stay on a Zoom for maybe an hour before I have to get up, maybe stretch, maybe just take a mental break, and then I'm ready for my work. And that's what's gonna happen to students when they come in-person. They're gonna get those breaks. They're gonna get those breathers. They're gonna get those stretch breaks. So then, as things go down, and we get in through September, and we're hoping it's sooner than later, but we're gonna go and look at Phase 3. And when we look at Phase 3, we're gonna slowly but surely start opening our campuses. Some students may, small groups, may go to automotive because they need hands-on. They need hands-on in order to get their certification. We may have some students go to the band hall and do some lessons down there. So as we get into Phase 2, we're gonna be a little bit more restrictive until we get kids familiar with being back on campus, what those expectations are. And then when we get into Stage 3, we'll have kind of that staggered and start moving students around the building. So that's kind of the reopening for right now, but we know that it could change. So we could go from Phase 2, and then almost get to Phase 3, and then all of a sudden, we know that maybe the cases of the COVID-19 go up, and we may be back into Phase 1. Next slide. The reason we chose the instructional method that we did, and when students come to school or they stay at home, the instructional strategies will be all virtual. They'll be created by teachers, engaged by teachers, activities by teachers. But that way, there's an equity in instruction, so all students are getting the same instruction. We also know that students are gonna need some social, emotional, just lessons, getting back into it. What does it look like? What were some of the things that experienced this summer, or maybe last spring, that we need to really kind of support and make sure they're feeling comfortable coming into the building? And then we look at students that may need academic acceleration or maybe some intervention. And so this gives us that flexibility to do it. We know that students are gonna be on-campus and pick virtual, but we also know that maybe you start in virtual, and maybe it's not what I want. Maybe I'm gonna go back into in-person. So this type of strategies that we're gonna kind of introduce tonight allows for that flexibility. And then it helps our teachers. One is, in Phase 1, it keeps everybody safe. In Phase 2, it keeps some safe along with students. But then it also allows for teachers to only have one instructional delivery model, which is that virtual, and they're not trying to go in-person and virtual at the same time. So with me tonight, and it's gonna go to the next slide, please, is Mr. Mario Acosta, and he's gonna kind of start walking with all the principals, walking you through what it's gonna look like in the secondary world. Mario?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Ms. Donald. And I have the opportunity to present and begin to explain to our community what the on-campus learning experience will start to feel like for our students, for those that choose to return on-campus, beginning in that Phase 2 component. So for both middle and high school students that choose to return to the campus post-September 10th or when we enter into Phase 2, the model that we have proposed is one that will allow students to follow an on-campus schedule that assigns them into a classroom with a mentor teacher, right? However, these students would be assigned to virtual classes that may contain both the in-person learners that are on-campus and the learners that are participating virtually from home. Students would engage in live synchronous instruction with their teachers, and they would also be scheduled asynchronous blocks for independent study time and other support times. Coming down in the presentation, we will present to you the specific schedules that we are considering at this time. But each student during that asynchronous time would have some flexibility to choose how they would manage their asynchronous learning. The students could follow their designated schedule and visit with the teacher that they had in the previous synchronous block. Or students would be allowed the freedom to manage their asynchronous time more flexibly. So the proposal that we have here to show the community tonight is that a blended model of both synchronous experiences with their scheduled teacher and asynchronous experiences that allow some autonomy for learners to be able to meet their own needs, as well as allowing our staff to be able to provide that extra student support. So for any students that would need extra time or support, whether that be through tutorials or small group learning sessions virtually, it would allow our staff in Round Rock ISD at the secondary level to use those asynchronous times very flexibly to be able to support and provide that extra intensive support for any student that may need it, while at the same time giving our learners some freedom and some flexibility to manage their own schedule. So at this time, speaking of the schedules, as we move to the next slide, I'm gonna pass it to Mr. Jonathan Smith, and he'll talk you through the middle school schedule.
Good evening. If you could please click the link. Can you click the link so that the schedule pulls up? Thank you. So good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Smith, and I'm the proud Principal of Deer Park Middle School within the McNeil Learning Community. As we begin preparations for this upcoming school year, the excitement of not just resuming but reimagining education is becoming palpable. Faculty staff meetings and trainings have already started, and our teachers are ready to delve into innovative practices that will meet all of our students' needs as we begin our new normal. I'll be sharing information regarding middle school schedules. We have been charged with creating master schedules and bell schedules that allow for seamless transition from virtual learning to on-campus learning. This year, all Round Rock ISD middle schools will use a block schedule for day-to-day instruction. This means that as opposed to students going to seven, eight, or nine periods in a single day, all students will have four instructional periods. Which periods occur on which day may vary from campus to campus. Some may go with an A/B schedule, some may go with an even odd schedule, et cetera. The bell schedule will be the same for on-campus learners beginning September 10th, as well as virtual learners or remote learners. All students, whether at home or on-campus, will engage in the same learning via Schoology. Each block class will include both synchronous and asynchronous learning. Approximately 30 minutes of synchronous instruction and about 50 minutes to 60 minutes of asynchronous instruction will comprise each block. The synchronous portion of the block will include both students on-campus and those at home. During asynchronous periods, students will engage in independent practice, excuse me, focused on the synchronous lesson objectives. Teachers will be able to truly personalize their student instruction during the asynchronous portion. Teachers will have the ability through Schoology to converse with students, assisting goal-setting and progress monitoring, meeting one-on-one with students, facilitating small group instruction. And teachers will also have the ability to group students virtually to work on assignments, whether they are on-campus or not. So as Dr. Flores has stated to us, we are moving away from unprecedented times to uncertain times within our new normal. We look forward to beginning this journey as a family together. And so for a few key points, I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. Oldham, the Cedar Valley Middle School Principal.
Well, thank you so much, Jonathan, and I appreciate everyone giving us the opportunity to connect with our community. My name is Zach Oldham. I'm the proud Principal of Cedar Valley Middle School, representing the Round Rock Learning Community. I think obviously when everyone, you know, saw that we're gonna start out in Phase 2 on September 10th, right now is when we're starting to begin that, and everyone saw that student movement is gonna be restricted. Everyone's fear was, you know, we're gonna be sitting in the same chair all day. We're not gonna be able to move around whatsoever. And I know that's difficult for a 16-year-old. That's difficult for a 12-year-old. It's difficult for a 39-year-old. And so I think that's what scared everyone a little bit, but honestly, we're really working, and yes, we are going to limit the movement throughout the building somewhat. But we're gonna be reasonable, and we're gonna make sure we provide lots of opportunities for our students to stretch the middle school campuses, and we've met extensively with middle school principals. We've designed ways to get, you know, our cohorts of students outside in the gym, getting, you know, obviously, they would not be mixing with other cohorts, but it gives them a chance to go outside, stretch their legs, get involved in some mindfulness and some social, emotional learning activities, and just give them a chance to move around throughout the building, because we know that is a challenge. And so as I said, students will be grouped in cohorts with one to two cohort leaders to support them. These are small groups, probably approximately 10 to 12 students, depending on the campus and the campus needs. But we want to make sure that we provide opportunities for our teachers and our cohort leaders to connect with our students and to build those relationships and maintain those relationships, and as well as the opportunity for our students to interact with their peers, which is a big piece that I know we've been missing since spring break of last year. So initially, large crowds when we're in Phase 2 are gonna be prohibited. You know, in the past, we would have students come to the building before school. I know at Cedar Valley, we had it at 7:15, but because of large crowd size, we have to go back to safety first. And so we're gonna ask that students are not drop at any of those schools until 8:00 a.m., just so we can help ensure that safety. And then lunches, I know that's a concern as well, as far as where they're gonna be eating lunch. And that's gonna be based on the safety first, of course, based on campus size, the number of students on campus, the availability of cafeteria space and things like that. And so while movement will be somewhat limited, we are going to do our best to ensure that our students do have breaks, that do have chances to go out and stretch their legs and move around throughout the building in a secure and safe manner. At this time, I'm gonna kick this over to our high school team, who has done just an amazing job of working together to work on a pretty complicated system of moving kids throughout the building. Thank you.
And please click on the link for the high school schedules. Thank you. Thank you, Zach. The high school schedule and the middle school schedule will share a couple of things in common. The high schools already practice the block schedule on a daily basis. And when we look at our schedule, we decided as high school principals that we will start our day with asynchronous learning. Asynchronous doesn't require students and teachers to be present online at the same time. It is self-paced. It does have opportunities for pre-assigned work, and it does have opportunities for pre-recorded videos. But it also provides an opportunity for the day to get started without the kids rushing, having to all be in this class at the same exact time. They have some time to get there, to get online, and to be able to get the asynchronous instruction. And at 9:30, we will be able to start our direct teach or our synchronous learning. In most high schools, there may be a second period, sixth period lunch block. Some may have a third or seventh period lunch block, but that will be what the high schools have done in the past. Some have two lunches, some have three lunches, some have four lunches. It depends upon the size of the campus and the size of the cafeteria in order to provide the space for the students to eat. With regard to social distancing, that will be a change as well, because we have to make sure that we are safe. And in our schedule, we have to build in opportunities for students to eat that have appropriate social distancing. So there may be times when we will be eating in non-traditional spaces during our lunch period. At the end of the day, fourth or eighth period, we will start with synchronous time, which is direct instruction, but we will end asynchronously. This will allow the students to be having a staggered release. All the students will not have to leave the building at the same time, and they will have an opportunity to be safe as they depart, practice social distancing. As long as we stagger the releases, we're hoping that all of our students will be successful, and most of all, healthy, at the end of their day, just like we want them to be healthy to start their day. Next slide, please. There are key points to the high school. And as high school principals, I have to say, we have really come together to work together for what's best for all of our schools, all of our students. And this model allows all of our students to remain enrolled in all eight of their courses with their scheduled teacher. This model also allows the students to have their schedules intact, regardless of whether they're in-person or whether they're having to be virtual. And this will be consistent with all students, that they may continue to have the same teachers. Our asynchronous blocks does allow for flexibility. It does allow students to attend virtual tutorials. It will allow independent study time. It will allow for some small group instruction virtually. It will allow some extra interventions, extra support to be given to our students. And later on in the phases, during the asynchronous time, there may be some special class movements during this asynchronous time. One great thing that we love about this model is that this model allows our students to have a mentor teacher that will support them socially and emotionally as well. And that mentor teacher will have an opportunity to make that impact on them on a daily basis, assist them when they have questions, help them to re-acclimate themselves to the learning environment, and hopefully, at the end of the day, give them the confidence to know that we will be okay. We will get through this, and we will see better days ahead. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Thomasine Stewart if she will continue the presentation.
Good evening. I'm the proud Principal of Success High School. I know you must be wondering how flexible we're going to be with attendance during this time period, especially when you hear all the presentations of asynchronous and synchronous in a situation where they're on-campus, off-campus. Good thing about this is that we received guidance from TEA. And at this time, students who are learning at home may be counted present for attendance purposes under one of the following conditions. The first one is daily progress in a learning management system, LMS. You'll hear a lot more about it. We're gonna be using a tool called Schoology. Another is daily progress via teacher-student interaction or the completion or turn-in of assignments. Please remember that attendance will be counted daily through this method, and that students will need to attend 90% of the days. Thank you. At this time, we move back to Dr. Acosta. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. And I just want to take a moment. I didn't quite introduce myself. There were other proud principals. So I want to make sure my community knows that I am the proud principal of Westwood High School. I don't know that I would be welcomed back across the west side if I didn't say I was proud to be there. So let us talk about something that's important to many, many high schoolers and middle schoolers as well, but we wanted to address how the grading policy will be impacted by this model moving into the fall semester. We want to make sure the community understands that according to the TEA guidance that was put forth earlier this month, grading policies for virtual and in-person instruction must be consistent with our district's grading policies prior to the COVID pandemic. All right? So really, what that's addressing there, and the TEA was really trying to encourage districts to get away from the pass/fail models that we all went to in the spring. And you've heard Dr. Flores, our Superintendent, mention many times that what happened in the spring was crisis education. And what we've worked all summer to do is build high-level, high-rigor education that is expected. So what the TEA guidance there was meant to do was to get us off of that pass/fail, which we are moving back towards our traditional 0 to 100 grading model. So parents and students will receive a syllabus and grading expectations on the first day of school for each of their courses. That's gonna look very traditional, as it has in years past. Now, in its delivery, obviously, will be virtual, but the design and the content of the grading policies will be set and will follow our Round Rock ISD School Board grading policies as they have in the past. A lot of questions have come up, and we fielded a lot of them as high school principals. And Dr. Watson is right, the five high school principals, and then our other principals from Success High School and Early College High School. We've worked very hard all summer long to make sure that we're collaborating well, and we've heard a lot of questions from all the communities about how we're going to effectively assess students in this environment. And so what we wanted to communicate to you as parents tonight was that testing procedures will be addressed by your specific content teachers on the guidelines for testing environment and test format. And that's gonna be specific for our on-level courses, our honors courses. Those were formerly known as pre-AP. They are now known as honors courses in our district. AP classes, as well as IB classes. So just to translate that for you, what that means is that, just as before, our fantastic Round Rock ISD staff and teachers are gonna be setting their grading policies in accordance with Round Rock ISD School Board policy, and they're gonna be implementing best practices, just as they always have for assessment. So if you're asking, you know, the question to your principals or to your teachers, "How are you gonna assess my kids?" Our teachers have been hard at work already all summer long, and our staff developments in the month to come are gonna focus very heavily on making sure that our teachers are ready to be able to effectively assess your children, so that their grades are an accurate reflection of their mastery of the content. And so we're really confident and actually really excited, because when you turn Round Rock ISD teachers loose on something, they produce a very high-quality product. And so we're already seeing the teachers beginning to prepare for being effective at assessing children, so that we can ensure that our grades are an effective measurement of the mastery of the learning, as they always have been in years past. Now, as principals, both at the middle school and high school level, as we've said, we've done a lot of collaboration this summer to make sure we build a high-level product for you and your child. And so it has been our recommendation and we have asked our superintendent and the leadership in the district to move us from a six-week grading period to a nine-week grading period. And the reason behind that is that we feel that giving our teachers the opportunity to have a broader window in which to report grades back will give students more opportunities to demonstrate that mastery and, and sort of slow down the pace of grade reporting. So while we won't cover any less curriculum than we typically do, what it does is just allow our teachers more times to authentically assess children and make sure that the learning environment and anything that the pandemic could cause as a negative does not result in harm to student grades. So the rationale behind the principals asking for that sort of time gap to open up was really to give our teachers the opportunity to effectively assess and assign grades that are truly meaningful so that our students don't have any inadvertent harm done to them or their educational process due to the constraints that have been put on us by the pandemic. So I appreciate that. And at this time, I am going to ask the slide to move forward. And I'm going to pass it to, I believe, Coach Wierich, who's going to talk about athletics.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Costa. My name's Dwayne Wierich, Director of Athletics. And I want to share with you some of the, the changes that have come down from the U I L as they relate to extracurricular activities and especially athletics. As many of you are aware, these changes occur almost weekly. So we were keeping up with that. We were being very flexible. We're making changes to, to meet those different policies that are being put into place. And tonight I want to share just a few of those things with you. One question that's been frequently asked is what about students who might choose to remain home and get their education virtually as we begin the school year? Will they be allowed to participate in extracurricular activities? And the answer to that is yes. Students who make that choice or families that make that choice, you will be able to participate in extracurricular activities. But just as in the past, you will be responsible for, you know, transportation for, for your child back and forth to campus and then home again to continue their instruction for the day. Some of the other changes include that off-season sports will now be able to practice before or after school, starting on September tenth. So whereas in the past, a basketball coach couldn't work with basketball players except during an athletic period. Now, starting on September tenth, they can choose to get their strength and conditioning done either before or after school under the direction of their coach. So that's a change for all off-season sports. I think to try and make up for some of the lost time that occurred this past spring. Annual sports physicals have always been required in the Round Rock ISD. But the U I L has put in place this year a one-year exception. So a student who has on-campus or on-file a sport physical from last year will not have to go out and get another physical this summer or prior to participating. The only people required to get that physical would be someone new to athletics. For example, seventh graders who have never participated or possibly someone with a medical concern or something in their medical history. Maybe someone who had surgery over the summer or someone who has a, say, past history of high blood pressure. Something like that. Otherwise, under normal circumstances, the physical that you have on file from last year will suffice for this year. In accordance with, with some of the other things that are going on around the country and in our state, face coverings are going to be required for athletes and spectators. If you come and attended event or if you're an athlete and participates, but you're not actively involved in some vigorous activity or in the, the actual competition at, at any one particular time, those, those people are going to be required to wear some sort of a face covering. We are going to be required to limit capacity to some number no, no larger than fifty percent. So those are some of the changes. In addition, there are simply going to be fewer games played in many of our sports. Games or matches as a result of a U I L change where either tournaments have been eliminated or maybe the sports calendar season has been shortened. So that's just a few of the changes. And at this time, I'd like to pass the next slide to our Director of C T E, Sherri Bonds.
Hi, everyone. Everyone is talking about the pride they have for their campus. I am proud to be the Director of Career and Technical Education for Round Rock ISD. And some of you may not be familiar with the acronym C T E. And what those C T E courses are, are career-related courses that your students in middle school and high school are able to select toward their academy and an endorsement. So it's classes such as health science, business marketing and finance, automotive, engineering, and everything in between. With those courses come specialized spaces and, and different things in a traditional classroom setting. So be rest assured that our teachers are working with us in groups on list of safety measures, P P Es, which are protective, personal protective equipment, instructional materials, supplies, and other things needed for in-person classroom instruction, as well as how to deliver our courses virtually. T E A has published a suggested list of courses that do require some amount of in-person classroom instruction in order to earn credit in a course. These are classes that have specialized labs, equipment, and things that cannot be replicated in the home setting. And our teaks or essential knowledge and skills that are required by T E A must be met in order to receive credit. So we're continuing to work on our list within Round Rock ISD and see how we can adapt as much as possible for a virtual setting, but then also have that limited amount of courses that would require in-person scheduling. Examples of those courses are things like practicum of health science where our students work toward their certified nurse aide certification and as well as automotive technology. We are investigating an alternate course for students who, for whatever reason, they and their families have decided that virtual only is their path for the year. And that's okay. So we want our students to still be engaged in their C T E area. So we're investigating an alternate to our in-person instruction where students could stay engaged in their content area and the coursework would account for their academy and endorsement pursuit for the year. And they could choose at the following year to enroll in the C T E course that they had deemed in their sequence. With that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Lisa Roebuck, who is our Director of Fine Arts.
Thank you, Ms. Bonds, and good evening, everyone. And since everyone seems to be using this word proud, I'm going to have to use it too. So my name is Lisa Roebuck and I serve as the proud Director of Fine Arts for our district. I will give you a quick overview of how things will look instructionally for our students who have selected a fine arts course. In phase one, as you heard earlier, all fine arts courses will be offered virtually. And there will be no before or after-school activities. As we move into phase two, our fine arts teachers will then be delivering instruction to both students who are at home and those that are at the campus in small cohort or a learning lab. Instruction is going to include both asynchronous and synchronous instructions and online assignments. With those online assignments, you will be hearing and seeing a lot more playing of an instrument, singing, dancing, acting, or creating art individually. Once before and after-school rehearsals and activities for our groups are deemed safe, we will follow the safety protocol document that is linked in this PowerPoint. It includes recommendations from the CDC, T E A, and U I L. And we update this document when those recommendations are updated. I encourage you to check out the link once this presentation is posted on the website. Important things to note are that before and after-school activities will be optional for all students. Also, virtual students may choose to participate, but they would need to provide their own transportation to the campus. We will remain flexible. Our teachers look forward to the time and phase when we can all be together rehearsing and creating in our art forms once again. In the meantime, we will stay safe. Thank you. And now I turn it back over to Ms. Donald.
Next, the, the last slide is kind of what we know right now from college board. And seniors have been told that most colleges are now going to make the S A T A C T test optional for this coming year. So most of our students took the test last year. They have a score. But you know, the, there's scholarships that may still require a, a score. College Board is working for an at-home test, but it's not quite developed yet. And they're saying maybe later on in the fall or possibly early next semester, they'll be able to have a, an at-home test. That at-home test will be like a three-hour test that will need, students will need to do in one sitting. To test in the building, the students and staff must follow all the CDC guidelines, the six feet apart and the facial coverings. And so right now, Round Rock is currently looking at starting up testing in October. There'll be no testing in September, but we're hopefully, everything is going to be fine and we're going to be able to start that testing, especially for our seniors who would like to take it again and also our juniors who are now starting our current senior, juniors who are starting that college trip or journey in their junior year. S A T is also working on possibly supplying some more extra testing days. Usually they're set. We're hoping that they will give some extra days during the semester for junior, seniors, or sophomores to be able to take those tests. And currently, right now, we don't have any information on the P S A T, which is usually given to our tenth grader and our eleventh grade about the national honor, uh, national merits. So we're still looking at that information. We look at it daily to see if it's updated. I'm sure it will be. But we'll keep a, a watch on that. So at this time, next slide, and I'm going to turn it back over to Jenny, because I think it's our question and answer session.
Thank you so much, Becky, and thanks to all of our panelists. You did such a great job. And we do have lots of questions. Some of them started coming in as early as, as before five thirty. It was a very comprehensive presentation and a lot of our questions, I think, were covered, but it's also a lot of information and some parents, well, most of our parents are hearing this for the first time. So if, if some of the questions, basically, the answers were already in the presentation. Panels bear with us. I think it, it is good for our parents to hear it again, explained and maybe given some examples. So I'm so glad that we have Ms. Roebuck and Coach Wierich on the, on the call because we have so many questions about extracurriculars, athletics, and fine arts. So one question is for virtual students who'll be coming onto campus for, for either of these. So, so either of you would be able to answer this. Will they just report to those classes? Will they have to sign in at the offices? Do we have that schedule worked out? And you might talk a little bit about how important coaches and, and band directors and how important the communication at the campus level is going to be in this.
Okay, Jenny, I'll be, I'll be glad to, to address that one. Yes, I, I think they would report straight or directly to where the activity takes place. So depending on what sport we're talking about, wherever they practice or wherever they would normally meet or according to the schedule that, that coaches will do a great job of sharing with, with their student athletes and families. They will report directly there. They won't, won't or should not go anywhere else. They should not go in the building. They should simply report there, participate in their activity, their practice. And at the end of that, they should, you know, return to their vehicle and, and head back home. So that would be the plan at this point.
Lisa, did you want to add anything?
Same for fine arts. For example, marching band mostly occurs outside. So they would know exactly from their director where to report on the campus and not go anywhere else.
And sticking with you, Lisa, we had a question specifically about things like wind instruments or, you know, those types of things with band orchestra where you can't wear a face mask and singing even. There might be more concern about, about spread. We'll be looking at outside classes. What's been the discussion around that?
The discussion around that, we've been collaborating with Directors of Fine Arts across the state. And we're investigating, for example, the use of masks and shields for singing. That's been an idea that's floated at the state level. We're still looking at all the research. A lot of the research is still coming in. We've also been seeing new products that actually put little masks over the instrument bell and put masks over the mouthpieces. And so we're investigating all of those. Our directors are looking at them as well as our assistant directors.
Great. Um, just like Tuesday night, we have questions about virtual as well. Of course, this is meant to be an overview and we were focusing more on on-campus. We did have a, um, we did have a town hall specifically for virtual, but we can't really split the two because we know our students doing both. So I'll be sprinkling in some questions about virtual as well. And, and this first one up, it's specifically for middle school. So Dr. Oldham or Mr. Smith might want to chime in. But I would imagine the same question goes for high school. What about supply lists for those students who are going to be learning virtually? What, what should parents be looking for?
And I can, I can take this, Jonathan, if you'd like. So for us, we did publish a, a recommended supply list earlier in the summer before the, the activity spiked again with COVID. For now, I would say that the main supply that's going to be needed for our virtual students is going to be headphones. Other than that, you know, as long as you have a laptop and access to, to Wi-Fi, I mean, that's going to be the main thing. But for now, I would, I would recommend just investing in a pair of, of, of AirPods or earphones or whatever you'd like to do.
Anything to add, Jonathan?
No, we had a very similar situation as Dr. Oldham. We are no longer going to have the same school supply list before. So I would definitely recommend parents purchasing AirBuds or earphones or something of that nature.
This is one for our high school principals. During a typical school year, high school students have, may have two to four hours of homework a day on the computer with most of their daily school being done on a computer, whether they're at home or at school. Well, they'll still, will they still be expected to have another two to four hours of homework after the scheduled school day ends?
I, I can answer that, Jenny. There will be an expectation that school will get back to normal as far as education is concerned because we do have to make sure we keep up with what we've lost in the spring. So there may be some homework assignments, but the great news is they will have the asynchronous time throughout the day to get some of that homework done, to get some help with those assignments. And if they're virtual, they'll have an opportunity to have more time to ask questions and get those questions answered so they can be more successful. What we don't want to do is cause our kids to get behind because we know the spring threw a loop for all of them and we have some makeup work and groundwork to do.
Thank you so much. Any, any other high school principal to jump in or do we feel like Mr. Watson covered it?
I think Dr. Watson hit it, Ms. Caputo, and I would say, you know, our teachers are already hard at work. And I think it's something I want to continue to, to communicate to the community that while our teachers are not yet on contract across the five high schools, they are hard at work already on trying to design a curriculum and, and a learning experience that keeps that high level of rigor that's expected. So I would absolutely concur with what Dr. Watson said is that while I don't know that we can quite yet tell the community exactly how many hours or how that's going to look, what I can, what I do know is that our staff will ensure that the, the rigor level is there and that the experience is there so that our students are prepared for what comes next for them, you know, next year and beyond that. But we're also going to make sure that we balance it right so that way we don't overwhelm the kids in this environment. And so I would concur that, that what we really love about our schedule is with those asynchronous blocks built in throughout the day, it's going to provide so much flexibility and so much opportunity for students to access their teachers virtually in small groups and in tutoring-type sessions that we're confident that we can keep the rigor level high without overwhelming students in this difficult environment.
Thank you, Dr. Costa. I think it's, it's also time to kind of highlight the guiding principle of being flexible, right? I know our principals will do a great job with that as, as well as our teachers. Another, Lisa and Dwayne, you're up again. And, and again, it, it might seem like a little repetitive, but I think it bears asking, what will classes like band and athletics look like in-person learning? These classes, especially band, are super, all in capital letters, important to my middle schooler. And by the way, I got a little, hi, Dr. Oldham, go Jags on that one. So if maybe you can kind of walk through for, for students, will this look and feel, there's, I think everyone is so hungry for some sense of, of normalcy. And, and so how will those, will they feel comfortable and familiar?
Does Lisa want to go first or if not?
If that's okay. So it is difficult to play your instrument in a learning cohort without, you know, blowing all over the place. And what we're looking at right now and our teachers are working very hard to learn about both synchronous and asynchronous instruction and how they can make that most engaging. And they've been working all summer, even off-contract. And we're discovering all kinds of professional development in that. And they are trying to make it the most engaging experience possible. Of course, what we hope is that very soon we'll be able to send some kids down to the band hall, but we cannot do that until we're safe. So in the meantime, we're doing the very best we can do. So in the meantime, we're doing the very best we can do in instruction to guide our students synchronously and then have them practice on that instrument at home.
And then Jenny, what I could add to that is, is I think, you know, your practices in your, in your athletic activities will look very much like, like they have in the past in terms of how they're structured. What you might see different is, is how, you know, water is delivered, things like that. We may require water bottles. You know, we had a good practice run with our summer strength and conditioning. And so we're, we're required students to bring their own water bottles. We were able to practice social distancing. We, we got good at sanitizing equipment in between, usage between groups. Facial coverings are going to be required when you're not actively involved. So I think that's some of the changes you would see just from, from standing at the fence and watching. But again, everything will be about an emphasis on safety to the extent, you know, at all possible.
And I will add that as soon as it's safe, we will look for getting the groups together, even in small groups and before and after-school rehearsals. But we'll do all those safety procedures that are outlined in that safety protocol to keep everyone safe.
Thank you. Dr. Presley, this is probably a good one for you, and then Brandy Hafner might want to back him up as well. How does flowing between in-person and virtual learning work? What's the procedure? If my child is sick, not necessarily related to COVID, can he or she stay home and log into a virtual classroom so the student doesn't have to be marked absent?
Yeah, once again, with flexibility being one of our highest priorities, just below health and safety, students who find themselves in a situation can learn from her, from home virtually. So we're, and, and obviously, I think we stated earlier, families can choose each grading period whether to transition. If they're going virtual to begin with and they, they're comfortable with going back to school, then they can do that, or this, the same, that it, and it holds true both ways. A kid who's in school and all of a sudden they want to decide they want to learn from home, they can do that. But those parameters are set from the guidance of TEA for each grading period. And so that would be each nine weeks. But, um, but a kid, I mean, students have to self-check, just like staff would have to do each day. And so a student who finds himself with symptoms, obviously, they would be, they would be able to have access to their curriculum and their teachers as they normally would. And that's kind of the fluidity of what we're trying to create, so the kids can transition from virtual to in-person as easily as possible. And Brandy, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I would just say that the, the guidance that's coming from TEA and CDC has changed the symptoms that we will be looking for that will be COVID-related. You know, kids are just going to have regular sickness in the middle of this as well. So we'll be working hard with the health, on some decision trees about how to comb those apart, because, because our goal is truly not to send every kid home that isn't feeling well for two week, a, a two-week quarantine period. So we are working hard with the health departments in our area to create a decision tree, so we can work on that.
And Brandy, can you talk just a little bit about how I know you're in constant contact with our, our health authorities, looking at moving from those different phases? And there's, there's, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's no one single metric that says, and now we can do this, and?
They are working to create that. They're working to create a metric for us at this time. The, the TEA document is a little bit loose as far as that's concerned. But honestly, the, these documents change every couple of days. So we are just, instead of, instead of spinning our wheels in one direction, we have been told that we're, that we have some new guidance coming. So we're just kind of waiting to see what that, what that says. But the Travis County and Williamson County are working nicely together at this time to help us come up with a metric, because you really don't want it to be arbitrary. We really don't want to just go by media hype or any of these things. We want to go by good local data and we want to have some, some, some measure so we can decide what's best for the kids and the safety of our staff.
Thank you so much. It's great. And we had a question. We've talked a lot about classes like athletics, fine arts, CTE, where students will be able to be virtual but come up to the campus. Will there, one parent's asking a great question. Will there be a list anywhere of classes that they know, this is a class that as a virtual student I can go to my campus to participate in? Is it more a matter of whether there's hands-on? Will, will they be told by their teacher? How, how does that? And maybe that's for one of our high school principals or middle school principals.
I think, I think I can take that one, Jenny. I think we're refining a list right now of courses that really TA recommends. If you take that course, you have to be hands-on, you have to be in-person. But as mentioned earlier in the presentation, there are also alternative courses that Ms. Bonds and her team are working on that you can take to continue your trajectory and your career pathway, if that's important, without having to come, come to school to do that. But we will allow students to come to school for courses that, just as we've discussed, fine arts and athletics. A student who's choosing virtual, a family who's choosing virtual for their student, can come to school for certain things. We're refining that list right now. We'll be publishing it soon. But it doesn't mean a student who, if there's a particular course they're ready for, that their, their family's not comfortable with them coming to school to take that course, we're looking at alternative courses that they can take as well. PBR, I think, is what it is, Ms. Bonds, that a project-based research course that can be put in place that would allow that student to continue their trajectory in that career pathway, so as not to breach their ability to get their endorsements at graduation. And Ms. Bonds, you may want to add something to that?
You did a great job of covering that, Dr. Presley. As you said, we do hope to publish that list very soon. It's a shorter list than most might think, and so we'll be ready to get that out. And our plan is for our teachers of those areas to be able to reach out to students if they have any questions and answer what it might look like to be in that class, if they would be a first-year student entering into a course, or just be able to, to help them understand what might come next in the sequence if they take a year off and do the project-based research.
We have sort of a similar question, but along the fine arts line, you know, we've talked a lot about will people be able to, students who would come to campus? But what if you're virtual, you still want to stay in that musical theater or choir class, but don't want to come to campus? Lisa, will they be able to, will there be activities that can be virtually?
Yes, we are working on that, and they will still be able to participate. We'll be as flexible as possible. We don't want any of our students in fine arts to go away. We want to keep them all.
Thank you. For our high school principals, someone said they'd heard on, on our last town hall that there'll be no off-campus lunch. Can parents drop off food for kids? Will high school students be allowed to eat in their car so they can at least get out of the classroom for 30 minutes?
I think I can take that one. I think our principals are working on their master schedules and to allow kids as much flexibility as possible to move about or to get a break or to go outside. I don't know if we're going to allow kids to sit in their car and eat. We are minimizing the number of visitors to campus. So I would encourage at this point, anybody who needs to bring their own food to eat for lunch, they probably need to bring it with them, because the, it's going to be challenging for all of our middle school and high school campuses, and I would even include elementary, for parents to come up and drop things off, because we're trying to minimize as many visitors a, a day coming to a campus at any level as possible. So, um, sitting and eating in your car could be an option, but I think I'm going to leave that to our high school principals to figure out as to where a certain pot of kids or a group of kids can go and enjoy their lunch. But I would tell parents, if you're not getting food from the school, if you're not, and we'll have food service available, obviously, but if you're not doing that, I would strongly encourage all parents to send your food with your student at every level, rather than having to come up and drop off lunch for your, your student, because that's going to be really challenging for our front office staff and the folks who receive that initially.
And Dr. Presley, do you want to talk a little bit about restricting visitors on campus and, and how, how we're handling that?
Yeah, I mean, right now, where we're, you know, we're, we're trying to social distance our kids that we're charged with educating and making sure they're safe and secure. So we're going to minimize as much as possible visitors to campus. And that includes any variety of folks that would normally come. Obviously, we're going to have, uh, delivery and things like that where things are dropped off. But we're trying to minimize the exposure on our top priority, safety, for as many folks coming to campus that don't have to actually come on campus and walk on campus as possible. So, uh, and we definitely want to be delicate with that with parents, obviously, because, you know, they come up for various meetings, teacher meetings, which we hope can be launched more virtually. But, uh, we just want to minimize the, as few people as possible being on the campus is better at this point. And once again, this is a starting point. We want to get back to normal as soon as possible. Everybody hates this. Everybody wants all their kids with them every day. And I know I can vouch for all the principals on the call tonight or in this meeting. They want to see every kid they have and plus some every day. But, um, but our charge right now is to minimize interaction among folks coming to campus, being on campus, and, and figuring out how we social distance. So that's kind of a general response, I guess, Jenny, to the question. But, uh, we're going to minimize visitors to campus as much as possible.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Estes, this one is probably better for you, and we do pop back over to virtual for a little bit. But the question is, um, uh, we didn't talk about gifted classes when we talked about virtual last week. Would they be available for those at-home virtual learners?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. So, so when you think about at the middle school level, the, the kiddos will still follow that same schedule, maybe not with their feet, but, um, using technology. And so absolutely, they'll, they'll still have the full complement of gifted classes.
And a follow-up on that as well, and, and I apologize, I don't think we have the right expert on, on the, on the call, but I think Ms. Estes can probably field it based on our staff meeting today. A question about IT issues when working in Schoology. There's some concern that there might have been some in the spring. Of course, that was a different platform. Will there be support, both for teachers and students?
Yes, our teachers will actually have 24-hour support through the vendor, through Schoology. So they can, if they are up late working on those lesson plans or loading a video into the platform, they'll be able to call someone at 2:00 AM in the morning if they need that support. With, with our students, we are working on a system for tech support using our instructional technology specialists. And so more details will be coming out for that, but, but we definitely want to support both groups of users.
Thank you. I'm going to do a couple more questions and then we'll wrap it up. And I, and, and once we do those, Dr. Flores, I'll give you a heads up, that I'm going to let you close this out. The next question is, for high school classes like physics, how will labs work? Will students watch the teacher do the lab work? Will students have to go to campus to perform? So again, that would be our at-home learners with, with labs.
And I can take that one too, Jenny. So there are some applications, some computer programs that we can use for lab demonstrations. And, and we are, uh, we've used some of those throughout the district, but we are in the process of acquiring district-wide product for that. And also, keep in mind, teachers can load videos and can stream live. And so the teacher could be doing a demonstration lesson in real time that students then are watching as, as they're at home.
Right, and I'm, I'm going to do two more questions, because I think one is pretty quick, but important. What type of computer would be best for our virtual middle schoolers?
Um, I would recommend a Chromebook, but the good news is that Schoology is very agnostic. You can even pull it up on a phone. That definitely would not be what I'd recommend for ease of use. But if, if parents already have a computer at the house that they are comfortable with their child using, that is perfectly fine. If not, Chromebooks are a relatively inexpensive device. And for our kids who have their own device, then they won't need to worry about checkout procedures. So it will really simplify things. We simply would need them to bring the device to the campus and let us onboard it.
Right. Um, this next question would probably, again, be best for Dr. Presley and maybe listen back at from Brandy. But I will say it's about safety protocols. And our very first town hall, which was last week on, on Monday, I believe it was the 20th, we had a whole hour-plus on this. So we encourage our, our listeners to go back and, and watch that video, because we had the folks that were chairing that committee, and there's a great presentation on it. The question is, what are some specific safety protocols in place to keep employees and students safe on campus?
And I will, you know, I'll say face coverings are going to be required. We expect everyone to wear face coverings, especially at the middle school and high school level. We're looking at plexiglass, plexiglass purchases and other things. And I know Brandy's been really involved with the safety committee, so I'll ask her if she wants to add anything to that.
Sure. The Safety and Operations Committee has been working very hard on this since May. But we're using guidance from TEA, CDC, DSHS, all of these different county authorities to create our safety protocols. And many of these can be found in the Reimagining Education document that is available on the website. There are parts of it that are being updated right now, so give us a little grace while we update that, because honestly, this, this guidance changes every few days. So we're updating it as the information comes in. I, I hate to kick the can like that, but I'm just being honest, this really does change every few days. But there's a lot of safety protocols found there.
Thank you, Brandy. And I'll just give a little plug to that webpage we have dedicated to all this information. If you go to roundrockisd.org, at the very top of the page to the left, you'll see a link to our reimagining education page. There's lots of dropdown menus with information. You can also click on the actual PDF of the document. It's a very long document, but it's broken up into sections, so you can quickly find what you're looking for. We also have it in Spanish as well. All of these town halls are recorded and the videos are, as well as the presentations are posted online. We have them closed captioned, and we are in the process of getting the closed caption translated into Spanish. So those will be on there very soon, as soon as we're, we're, we're leaning on those folks to get that done as fast as we can. And there's also an email address, reimagining underscore education@roundrockisd.org, and you can find that on that page as well. I want to remind everyone, on Monday night, we have another town hall focused on special education. If you feel like there's another just specific, maybe niche area that, that you'd like to see a town hall on, please give us an idea. We, we'd love to make sure we're answering all your questions. With that, I'm going to hand it over to our superintendent, Dr. Flores, to wrap us up.
Thank you, Ms. Caputo. I, I do think that, uh, that the parents tonight and those watching and those paying attention and, and all, I, I, I want to just let you know what you saw is what's indicative. A thin slice to our entire organization, our entire organization working hard for you, trying to find answers where a lot of times there's, everybody in the world's looking for those kind of answers. But I, I just want you to be assured or rest assured that we will continue to evolve in the best interest of our students, our staff, and our community. So know that there will be some decisions that you may agree with and say, I just don't understand that. Well, that's because some of the guidance we're receiving changes. I used to, I used to welcome weekly, now even daily. But now I see sometimes guidance changing and shifting within an hour and moments and minutes notice. So, so just knowing that is the world we live in at this time. I just know that if we can have patience and understanding that we are working really hard to make the experience to return to, I say, better rather than normal, because I think we get an opportunity to do so. But in order to do that, we've got to move slow so that then we can move fast. You heard a lot tonight about how we're going to take, uh, safety as the top priority. And I know that sometimes we all want to go back to the school that we knew in March, and that was just five months ago. But we're not going to go back to those schools anytime soon, but we can get there. And when we get there, we're going to go as fast as we possibly can, once that progress that's necessary exists. And I feel confident, and you should feel confident, that we will continue to, to value that. And then the last thing I'll say is that in Round Rock, we take great pride in the rigor of our curriculum. But we also, tonight, I hope you got to, by having campus leaders those closest to our students, you get to see that relationships matter just as much, if not more. So when we think about Round Rock and being that destination district, we've got a lot of work to do, but we prize and we value not only academics, the arts, and athletics. We produce what we consider a district that has continued to evolve at a time that every district in the nation, as well as the state, is looking for solutions on how best to educate your child. So know that we'll continue to work on that. We'll continue to make some mistakes. But guess what? If we can all understand that we're doing this for the best interest of our students, our community, and our staff, we're going to get through this sooner rather than later. And I do believe our world will be better soon. So thank you for joining us and be able to, to, to assist us along this journey. So thank you so much. Thanks to all the panelists as well.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and thanks everyone for joining us. Have a good evening.